Make sure they're not in the other.
Erica has been.
Okay, great, wonderful, thank you.
Eric, is it, would it be possible, if it's a big problem, don't worry, I'm at my law office for this meeting instead of my home office, and I forgot my agenda for the special board meeting here today.
Sure, do you want me to email it to you?
Would you please, would you email it to me, to my P M H O R S T?
M A N.
P M Horseman at Mac, M A C dot com.
Will do.
There were a couple extra pieces to go there. And I don't know if you have it, but if you don't, Lindsay.
I did make a copy of the extra pieces that were sent, I just didn't get them.
Okay, both sessions?
Um, no.
Okay, so you might, you'll probably, we have the manager recruitment.
I do have, I have the manager packet, and I have a resume, is that the two?
Yes.
Now, it's just, I just left the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry.
Lena's in the other.
It sounds like Liz hopped in, are you out there, Liz?
No, this, this is Erica.
Oh.
Lena's in the other room, and I think it might be, so I'll text them. Or I can leave this session and come back, but I couldn't talk to them, and I was hearing you.
Okay. Yeah, I can't see, not attendees or panelists, or some other room.
No, they're in the exec, they went straight into the exec session.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So, yeah, but we need at least one of them for a quorum to do the motion.
Yeah, well, not, not just that, we, you know, it'd be good to have them here in the regular session.
Hey Lindsay, this is Rose. Lindsay?
Hi, Rose.
Hey, I just sent you a text, I don't have the Teams link.
Okay, let me, let me get in there.
Okay, thanks.
Don't worry, Rose, I won't go in there without you. All right.
I'm sending again, Jenna.
It looks like Liz might be in the other session as well.
I'm assuming somebody did that, I mean, I could do that, but I assume somebody else is taking care of that, hopping in and telling them.
Lindsay's over there doing that.
Okay.
And I was just on the phone with Supervisor Fowler.
All right. And do we know if we're going to get Supervisor Begay? She's been wrestling with her coverage, I think she said she was coming in today.
That's what her office had indicated, sir.
Okay.
I spoke to her earlier, and she was in the office at that time.
Okay.
Thank you, Lindsay, I got them, appreciate it.
Well, we're not just going to make a motion, we, we definitely need an introduction on this before, and on that, so we, you know, I'd like to get the, you know, hopefully the full board.
Supervisor Archuleta's coming in.
Supervisor Fowler says she's trying to find the Zoom link.
Should be in her calendar, we'll forward again.
And Mr. Chair, Supervisor Begay should be joining shortly, Colleen just checked in with her in the office.
Okay.
What a team we are.
That's right, doggone it, should be in the calendar, I'll send that. So, I sent that back. There's Liz, all right, welcome, Liz. We're waiting for Lena and Judy, they're trying to get in, they're trying to find their Zoom link, there's Lena, okay. And then.
Supervisor Begay is coming in right now, sir.
Ah, fantastic, all right. Let me broaden my screen so I can.
Hello?
Hello? Okay, we're, we have you kind of mumbly, but we see that you're in, Judy. Okay. Yeah, all right, so we've got the full board in at this point, Supervisor Begay, Supervisor Archuleta, Supervisor Fowler, Supervisor Horseman, along with myself. So, at this point, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And the first item that we have on our special meeting today is a discussion regarding the consideration of possible appointment to fill the vacancy of the school superintendent of schools, or the superintendent of schools, pardon me, pursuant to A R S thirty eight dash four three one point zero A one. The board may vote to enter executive session on this item. Before we go there, though, we'll have Joanne Keen, our deputy county manager, introduce the topic. And, and we'll see where the board wants to go, Joanne?
Great, good afternoon Chair Ryan, and members of the board. Today, the board will be discussing the vacancy of the superintendent of schools. As you are all aware, and the public is aware, superintendent of schools Tommy Lewis resigned his position last week effective immediately. The chief deputy, Tina Wells, has been acting as superintendent of schools in her role as chief deputy, but has indicated her intent to retire in March. Under Arizona Revised Statute sixteen dash two thirty, the board has the authority to fill this position. As a reminder, the qualifications for the superintendent of schools are that the individual be of the same political party. And under A R S fifteen dash three oh one, this individual must also hold a basic or standard certificate to teach in the schools in the state of Arizona. Mr. Chair, members of the board, the board has a couple of options today. One is the board can fill the vacancy immediately until the next general election. This option would provide continuity in the office immediately, which is much needed during the COVID nineteen pandemic, and the role that this individual has had working directly with the schools within Coquamino County. Another option is the board can open the position and interview candidates and fill the vacancy until the general election. This would take some time and would likely not overlap with the retiring chief deputy's schedule. Chief Deputy Wells is set to retire in February, but has agreed to extend for another month during this time. Mr. Chair, as discussed, and has, has been mentioned to the board, we do have one internal candidate for the position who holds the qualifications that I mentioned above, and has worked within the office of the superintendent of schools for ten years. The board has the option, as you mentioned, as posted, to go into executive session pursuant to A R S thirty eight four thirty one, to discuss the position and the current operation of the office with this individual. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it back over to you. And you're on mute.
Yes, guilty again. So, I should pause for a moment, for the sake of the board, to ask any questions, we have Rose Winkler as our attorney here also. Do we have questions of the board? I'm not seeing any questions, I would like to suggest that we consider the possibility of looking at an internal candidate. And I would, with that, I would recommend that if we do that, to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Horseman?
I would move at this time that we go to executive session pursuant to A R S thirty eight four three one, point zero three A one and A three, possible advice from counsel as well.
Okay, I think I had Judy come in with a second, is that correct? Okay, Supervisor Begay had this, had a motion by Supervisor Horseman, a second by Supervisor Begay. All in favor of the motion, vote aye. Aye. Okay, and before you get off this, make sure you turn off your Zoom so that you can go into the team's executive session meeting. Thank you.
Hello, where are you guys? Back to back.
Oh, come on, what happened here? You're in Patrice, I can see you on the screen.
But you're muted.
All right, there. Am I back?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Lindsay, can you check with the chair?
Just got in, I had a problem getting in, sorry about that guys. Technology is our friend. Okay, let me open that. Okay, we got everybody here, let me uh, let's check on that. How we doing? We have Lena, I see Patrice, I see Judy's up there and Liz is in there. Okay, so we have the full board here. Okay, and then uh, we've just come out of an executive session where we had an interview with an internal candidate potential for the school superintendent. Name of the candidate is Cheryl Megan Mango Pageant, pageant if I, Cheryl Mango, Mango Pageant, sorry Cheryl for that. And uh, you know, this is our chance, we've come out of the executive session before we went into the executive session. We noted that we do have the ability to make an appointment. Considering the circumstance that we're in with COVID-19, the need for the office, I think it's really important that we that we expedite the process. It's for the board to consider whether they would like to appoint the candidate that they just interviewed. And so I would turn to the board. Based on the interview that you just had, is there anybody that would like to weigh in or make a motion associated with this?
I'll be glad to.
Supervisor Horseman.
Yes, thank you Chair Ryan, and yes, I would also note as you just did, the importance for us to fill this vacancy. We are in the middle of a huge COVID pandemic and it is certainly a challenge for educational system. It is important that we continue the continuity of the county school superintendent's office. Having an internal candidate with the kind of background and experience that Cheryl Mango Paget has within this department, 10 years within this department, I would like to make a motion if I may.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that the board appoint Cheryl Mango Paget for the position of county school superintendent and find that she meets the statutory minimum qualifications of the position pursuant to ARS 15-301 as well as meets the qualifications to, of appointment member of the same political party as the elected county school superintendent and meets all the other requirements. So it asks that we entertain a motion to appoint Cheryl Mango Paget as county school superintendent.
I have a, I have a motion by Supervisor Horseman.
Second.
I have a second by Supervisor Archileta, discussion.
This supervisor today had a question or comment.
Go ahead Supervisor Bagay.
This is for the duration of the, of the year duration.
Can you?
Mr. Chair, can I clarify, I believe she's asking when the, the end of the term?
The duration, yeah, that's what I thought I heard.
Through December 31st, 2022.
I will, I will add that to my motion.
And will you consider, you're on mute Liz?
That is the understanding of my second.
Okay, okay, go back to, is that, that was the intent of your question Supervisor Bagay? Okay, excellent, very good point. With that, any discussion, I'll just add my own perspective on this, as noted by other supervisors. You know, really, really important that we fill this role, I think we have an outstanding candidate as a recommendation that comes internally. There's continuity that I see associated with the picking up this role already, being in the office, already having the relationships with the schools and understanding quite a bit about the position itself. That I feel very comfortable in supporting the motion that's before us. I'll just pause if anybody else wants to add anything. Not seeing anybody, I'll go ahead and call the question, all in favor of the motion, vote aye, aye?
Aye.
Supervisor Fowler, I didn't, did I hear you out there? I heard Supervisor Bagay, Archileta and Horseman. And we may have lost Supervisor Fowler. Are you out there Supervisor Fowler? Thumbs up, we don't have voice but she's giving a thumbs up on an aye. Okay, there we go, we have a unanimous decision of the board to appoint Cheryl as the school superintendent. Congratulations Cheryl, want to thank you for stepping forward, wish you luck and and anything we can do to help with the transition we would like to do. All right, so.
Thank you for appointing me and I look forward to working with everyone. And I think together we can do great things for our families here in Coconino County.
All right, excellent. All right, so next item of business that we have on, we we have a discussion and direction regarding the recruitment of the county manager position, including recruitment brochure and recruitment process. We, for this, we were posted to we're supposed to go into executive session for this one, is that correct? I just want to.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, so I need a motion to go back into executive session.
So moved.
I have one by Supervisor Horseman. I need a second.
Second, Liz Archileta.
Second by Supervisor Archileta, all in favor of the motion, vote aye, aye?
Chair Ryan?
Yes.
The agenda IC does not have an executive session posted for this item.
Okay, that's what I was wondering when I was looking at that one. Okay, so we are not supposed to go into.
I apologize, that was my error.
Okay.
If I may, Attorney Winkler, as I understand it, we have any questions of a legal nature that we can ask to go into executive session for any matters that, for legal advice, is that correct?
Certainly, yeah, we do have the overarching language with regard to legal advice, executive session. But I don't believe that's where we're starting, so I just wanted to note that.
And thank you very much, with that I will withdraw my motion for executive session.
Excellent, excellent, and I would assume withdraw the second there?
I am withdrawing my second.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'm, I'm reading it and I was wondering that, and that's why I was asking the question, but we're, we're doing a lot of business right now. I want to thank everybody. We have Doug Thomas here that's been working with us from SGR, but what I'll do is we have Joanne Keane to introduce the item and then we'll turn it over from there. Joanne?
Sure, good afternoon Chair Ryan, members of the board, welcome Doug. Today we're joined by Doug Thomas, who's the Senior Vice President with Strategic Government Resources. And he's also our consultant for the county manager executive search. Each board member received Mr. Thomas's first draft of the county manager recruitment brochure, you received that on Monday. And many of you have had the opportunity to share some initial feedback with Chair Ryan and Erica Philpot, our HR Director. I would like to point out that Erica actually was hosting a webinar right now, so she is unable to be on this, this Zoom call today. Mr. Thomas was given the initial feedback earlier this afternoon. And today's session is an opportunity for the board to discuss thoughts about the brochure and provide any additional feedback directly to Mr. Thomas. The plan is for him to incorporate that feedback into a revised brochure. Mr. Chair, at this time I'd like to turn it over to Doug if he has some kind of initial comments.
Great, thank you Joanne and members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you today, I realize you've had a busy, busy day already, so we're adding to that as well. And just to clarify, there's nothing that I have that I would think that would be of a confidential nature or anything tonight that would jeopardize anything that we're doing on your behalf relative to your question about the executive session, so not, not a factor, we can certainly go through with that and there's no concerns on our behalf either. So just to follow up on what Joanne has mentioned, I have had the opportunity to meet with all of you as well as representatives of the city, of the county manager's office. And I've met with most of your constitutional officers, I have one more meeting tomorrow and then another scheduled for about a week out. And if you would like, I know you just went through your process, I was aware that your superintendent had resigned, and so if you would like to incorporate Cheryl into that process as your newly appointed superintendent, I can work directly with, with Erica, who's been helping us coordinate that, just to get feedback from all of your constitutional officers as well, so I appreciate everybody's flexibility and willingness to meet with me and your candidness in terms of the challenges and the issues and the opportunities that helped us develop the brochure that you had to review earlier this week. I, as, as Joanne had mentioned, I've received the information regarding some of the feedback that the board has prepared. And I've gone back in and tried to capture all of those comments to the extent that I have. And then I'm waiting to get whatever additional comments that may come forward through today's conversation. I do have a couple of clarifications that I'd like to, to make sure I'm on track with, just so I have captured it, especially as it relates to some picture placements and things of that nature. And then what I would like to do, after we've gone through that conversation, to walk you through where we are, what the schedule looks like, the, the current schedule, I know we've worked on a, on a proposed timeline with Erica and several dates and times have been locked down on your meeting, but I do have some procedural questions I'd like to go through, as well as some just policy questions for you to start thinking about as we get deeper into the search about what occurs and what the format and the logistics may be. So with that Chair, if you're okay, I, as I said, I've, I've tried to incorporate all the, the written comments that I could capture that have been provided to me. But if you're okay, I have a couple of questions on pictures and if I can get to the point where I could share a screen just to make sure I understand picture placements, and I understand we also, I anticipate receiving some additional pictures that have been put, that had been discussed, but I just want to make sure somebody's got that at your end, because that's something obviously we'll, we'll need in order to complete the second draft.
Okay, yes.
Okay. So, okay, have I authorized to share screen now? I'm good? Okay, let me do this and go. Okay. All right, everybody. Is everyone seeing that now? It should be the front, the front part of the brochure?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, I just make sure the technology's all working. So as we can walk through the pictures, I just want to get a clarification, is the, is the first, the front picture acceptable to everyone at this point, or is there any, I didn't hear any comments on that, let me reduce the size here so everybody can kind of see what we're dealing with here. So is the, the cover picture acceptable, everyone?
I would prefer like the San Francisco Peaks or much more beautiful picture of the of the Grand Canyon, I mean, I'm assuming this this is a picture of one view of the Grand Canyon, is that correct?
Whatever, whatever pictures we got, we got from you and then our graphics designers try to do it, so if there is a particular picture that you would like us to use as we go through this process to the extent that Erica could help identify those, so that we can make sure we get them appropriately placed, but yeah, whatever pictures we got, we got.
Yeah, that's the picture of the Colorado River.
Right, I was thinking there's might be one, yeah, I can, I can hear, is that Lena?
Yeah, this is from the Navajo Bridge and looking towards the Lee's Ferry.
Yeah, well then maybe like, let's just, maybe even just like cite what it is, because I think we're trying to educate folks too, like what, what the pictures are, maybe just put a citation on them. That might be nice, because otherwise they don't, we're trying to show the vastness of the county and the beauty of the county, so maybe even just, is there a way to put like a citation so people know what they're looking at?
And once again, I want to defer back to you, we can do that, but I'm going to need someone from the county to say, here's the picture we want on this page and here's what we want as the caption. Because I'm not going to know that at my end here, and the graphics designers aren't going to know that, so I'm, I'm happy to accommodate that, I'm just going to need some direction and assistance from the county in order to incorporate, you know, those things.
Yeah, so just somewhere in the brochure, I'd love to have a picture of the San Francisco Peaks and maybe with some snow that just shows like the diversity of the actual weather, and I mean, we're trying to communicate like what our county is, and so maybe one that just shows some seasons as well. Because you certainly kept, you know, you showed the beauty of our, of our area. But just maybe somewhere in the brochure, picture of the, of the peaks with some snow to try to capture some of the, the geographic, the the weather and the other diversity, and then just some citations, which, yeah, I mean, of course our folks can help with that. So that people can look them up and see like the different areas and learn more about them.
Sure, as I said, we're more glad to accommodate that. And if there's a, if there's a different, what, just to help in the process, because I have some other questions that came up in some of the comments about the pictures and placements and and just want to make sure we're good so that we get a second draft back to you, we captured that, so whoever's coordinating that, if Joanne or Erica, whoever's doing that on your behalf, if they can say, here's the picture we want on the front page and here's the caption just so I can easily convey that, because this, I'm handing it off to a graphic designer that works for someone else with us and we just want to make sure we don't lose any, you know, fumble the ball as we're handling off each of those placements, so just looking for clarity on that.
Yeah, just a note on that, we'll be able to weigh in on it, and then over the weekend, we would be asking the board for any refinement that's going on that we work together with Erica and Joanne on, on that, so that we can help Doug meet his timeline associated with it. I think we have Supervisor Horseman, Patrice, that wanted to say something here.
Well, actually, I just said to Julian to send you, I just sent him a whole bunch of pictures of the San Francisco Peaks, complete with snow, without snow, and so I just said, send them off to you, so you'll get them in a minute here.
Great, okay, appreciate that, all right.
And before you go on, I probably want to weigh in on this, and you know, I can see the desire to put the Colorado River as you know, this is a big, very important western river that wanders through our region. But a view at this point with the river is, you know, it could be any western river in the area. You know, I would say, you know, the Grand Canyon is probably, which encapsulates the, the Colorado River for the front piece, I would say would be probably more of a, a recognized icon internationally, internationally associated with that. I wouldn't want to diminish the importance of the Colorado River, I just wouldn't see it as our, our front piece associated with that. And, and you know, just check with the other board members, I mean, since it is the front of the brochure. Lena, I know you're, you're expressing the importance of the Colorado River, I probably want to turn to you for a second and see what your thought is with my comment on that.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sure can.
Okay, good, I wasn't sure if, I had to call in because my computer audio auto, it just went out again. So I would, well, I guess we need a picture that is not just pointing at the river, that is the Colorado River. I think that, you know, the Grand Canyon, a photo of Grand Canyon would be really great, there's some that are really nice photos of the Grand Canyon. So it just shows the diversity, the 198 miles of the Colorado River runs right through Coconino County. So it is very significant and there are some photos that are, are out there that have the Colorado River right in the middle, this is Lee's Ferry. Lee's Ferry is where the Upper and Lower Basin starts. It's very significant in that nature, so just.
Would you be okay if we kept that picture but put it in another location but have the Grand Canyon as the front?
No, that has to be the cover, District 5 is the focus here.
Didn't we pass that over to Utah a couple of years ago? I was just, no, just teasing. Yeah.
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, good.
I'm good, yes.
Is that okay with the other supervisors? You know, I don't want to drive it, want to make sure everybody's comfortable with it.
And we, we do have, as you probably noticed Chair Ryan, a number of other pictures of the Grand Canyon, which is near and dear to many of our hearts. And being on the river is near and dear to many of our hearts. On the other hand, the one dominant feature almost throughout the whole county is the San Francisco Peaks. And I know Doug, you probably haven't been, oh, you've been to Flagstaff, so.
A long, long time ago, though, you know, I was, I was a young lad and had hair at that time, so.
Well, it dominates pretty much throughout the county, no matter where you are in the county, so that would seem to make sense, to have the San Francisco Peaks, Sacred Peaks to Navajos Hoppies and many people, as well as great significance for those of us who live here, so that'd probably be great, although I love the canyon and I'd like to see other pictures of the canyon, so.
So Patrice, are you suggesting the San Francisco Peaks on front as opposed to the canyon, or are you suggesting somewhere?
I am suggesting that the San Francisco Peak should be front and center for the county. Suggesting that the San Francisco Peak should be front and center for the county.
Okay, yes. Other supervisors on this. It would be good for us to solve that for Doug. Go ahead, Liz.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be good front and center. I mean, the I mean, it would kind of convey right away like where the person would live because it is the flex, you know, Flagstaff is the county seat and the San Francisco Peaks are iconic for, you know, for the area. But then there's other opportunities throughout the brochure to be able to put the Grand Canyon and the Colorado River where I think that would be, that would be great because obviously the economy, you know, the economy that we achieve from the Colorado River and associated businesses and industry and with the Grand Canyon. So it'd be most appropriate to make sure we include that in there. And we're just talking about landscape photos right now, right? We're not talking about people photos yet.
I'm gonna, I want to, as I said, there were some suggested replacements of some of the pictures and moving some of the round in the brochure. So those people pictures were something I'll capture, Liz, as we get deeper into it, if people want to, you know, go through that conversation. Yes.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's solve this front page real quick here. We don't want to leave Doug in between us on that. So go ahead, Lena. You're bubbling up. Go ahead.
No, I'm just, I'm looking at what was emailed out by Lindsay here. And I think that's the PowerPoint we're looking at. It doesn't have any of the changes that I had submitted.
Well, recognize the brochure that you have. I have not had a chance to, I just got the edits late this afternoon. So I've not, I've not incorporated any of these edits. I've, I've been cleaning them up on my end with notes and balloons that will, you know, notes that will go to my, my team and the graphics designer to incorporate. So there's been no changes to what you got earlier this week.
Correct. Yes.
So do we want to do those changes and then come back again? Or are we going to go through and edit the whole brochure together?
So the suggested edits, Doug's already.
What are we doing here?
The suggested edits Doug's already incorporating in there. Trying to help him get some other points associated with the pictures, helping him with more of the editing. And then we have a chance over the weekend to look at what was modified and respond over the weekend to help Doug refine it and come to a final copy on that. So this is, he's incorporating the suggested edits right now. But we don't have it before us. Okay. Does that help?
Thank you.
Did I mess you up, Doug, or you?
No, that's correct. As I said, I did have, because I got some, there was some text that came to me about some of the picture changes and placements and they weren't entirely clear. And that's what I wanted to make sure I understood so that we got you that next draft. Our goal is to capture your, whatever. I've already gotten all the text edits that had been suggested and I've got those ready to go to my, my team. I'm waiting to see if there's some additional text edits or suggestions on things because I think a couple of the the board members had not had fully had a chance to react to that. So I wanted to capture those so I can send a comprehensive list to my team. But I did need some clarification on pictures as well. So that's, that I was really just trying to get some direction from the board on if there were certain things that you liked where they're at, certain pictures, or alternatively, if there were new pictures, you know, which ones that you may want to be having us insert in the second draft.
And the most prominent one is the, the front one. Let me solve that real quick here on it. We have a suggestion of the San Francisco Peaks where Patrice and Liz have weighed in on that, suggesting Grand Canyon is on another page as one of our iconic areas. Lena or Judy, comments on that?
Um, supervisor.
Yeah, go ahead Supervisor Bagay. Go ahead, Judy.
I think it would have been better if we had all our comments incorporated, you know, to really see what changes are coming about and what recommendations were made. Um, you know, but I think we all have a unique areas that we live at and just that, you know, in our districts, there's a lot of good places in all the district, one through five. And, but you know, just like Patrice had mentioned, you know, the Dope Coast Slade means a lot to the Native Americans and it's a sacred mountain. And also I think that may be a forerunner in this whole top sheet of the whole the first, the first top sheet. So anyway, other than that, you know, I, I didn't make any recommendations on the pictures or anything. I was just, I did some recommendations on the wording of it. So anyway, I just want to, I just want to say that.
Okay. And, and you, I believe either Joanne or Erica, Erica conveyed most of the recommendations, those that they had received from the supervisors, they had conveyed them over to Doug. So whoever reached out to you, that was the intent. And I believe Doug got those comments. Was it you, Joanne, or was it Erica that reached out? Or Judy, who reached out to you?
Should have been Erica.
Okay. Yeah. And Erica, she, she called me up until what about noon, somewhere in that range, telling me that she, all the comments that she had gotten by that point, she conveyed them over to Doug and, and that's what Doug's talking about. He's incorporating them in there as suggestions. And actually, you know, I've seen, you know, the recommendations that have come in, you know, I don't know if you've seen copies of them. You know, I think we're trying to include everybody's recommendations right now. So we're, we're working on that and we will get a, Doug's going to fine tune this and we'll get it back. What I just heard from Judy, though, is also liking the idea of San Francisco Peaks up on the front for depending upon which district the, the importance of them. So it sounds like that, that would be the front one. And then Grand Canyon as a prominent feature, very important to have in somewhere else in the brochure. All right, Doug? So we got the front.
Okay, great.
All right. That's the most important. I think it'll start to move on.
No, I, I fully understand. Absolutely. Okay. So, all right. So then as we're moving through, and you'll see, these are where I started to make the various edits, these little bubbles that'll pop up. So though, you know, I'm not going to go through those line by line, but I've, I've captured what has been provided to me. There was a suggestion on your courthouse building to relocate this. And I, I just want to verify, number one, are you good with the courthouse picture? And then my understanding is there was a desire to relocate that picture down to, let me see here, where was it here? Yeah. So there was a desire to relocate that picture to this spot here, which I assume is, is horseshoe bend, correct?
That's correct.
And then, so then as part of that recommendation, it was a desire to get a more colorful picture of horseshoe bend, but I didn't know where they wanted, where, you know, are you okay with us just figuring out where to put that once we get that? Or you know, as I said, it was very specific to move, move this picture to that spot, but then, and then replace this picture with a more colorful, but I had no direction on where you, you know, if there was a specific spot you wanted horseshoe bend, the new picture of horseshoe bend placed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Liz.
Yeah, I mean, as much as I enjoy this, I think maybe, I mean, I really think the front, you know, I think it's great that the board's deciding like what's going to be the, the major photo, but I wonder if like the photos and the captions and all of that can be worked out with the, like our public affairs team and with, you know, Jimmy, who's helping us with the administration of this and the other two DCMs. I really want to get to content and language. And so I don't know how much time we have today for this, but I just, I think our time is best spent looking at content.
Yeah, our cold stop should be three forty-five should be a cold stop. We then have a four o'clock meeting after that in terms of timing.
I'm more interested in looking at the type of county manager we're searching for and what's being communicated in terms of skills, characteristics, leadership, et cetera.
Okay. Just let me pause for a minute, minute on that and go to the board, other board members. Supervisor Archuleta is suggesting that we get to the content, charge HR and management to work together with Doug on the photos on where the rest of them will be placed. We'll still see them. We'll have a chance over the weekend on that placement. And we would want you to weigh in so that, you know, over the weekend associated with that. Supervisors, other supervisors, are you okay with that recommendation? Or do you want to add anything else? Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, Ryan, this is Lena.
Go ahead, Lena.
I agree with the, I, I.
I heard you, you just muted, but you said you, you, yeah, go ahead, Lena. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I agree with Supervisor Archuleta that the photos be, we can look at that when they be assigned to the public works and the team. And then as far as the wording is concerned, we had already submitted the wording changes. And if it's not incorporated, we're going to be going through the same wording again. Can we have those incorporated and then come back together or reset sent back out to us and then we can we can look at it? Because I don't see much changes in there.
Let's turn to Doug for a second.
Okay, so I, I fully under, you know, I, I know that boards will sometimes be very emotionally invested in what the brochure looks like. And I certainly appreciate the, the challenge of doing this remotely and with boards and, and everyone trying to look at pictures and placements. I am totally comfortable working. If you want to sign the, the, the ultimate pictures that you want to use and its placement and caption with someone that we can give us some direction just so we can do it. And I'm trying to be responsible to you, but I don't want to get us caught in the weeds in terms of what that looks like. So I'm fully sensitive to that component. And as I said, I, I, you know, in a perfect, we just got the, the edits. So I have not had a chance to have my team incorporate those. But I also was under the impression that there were a couple of board members that may want to add some additional comments that maybe were not transferred to me. And I'm open to take those now so that I can incorporate those into whatever else I've got. My, my hope is to get one clean edited copy back to my team so they can get that together and then get all, ultimately the pictures and whatever captions you want and then get those adjusted as well. So I'm, I'm sensitive to the time issue here. So maybe in the interest of where I think the board is heading, if the board members who had, did not have a chance to weigh in and provide information may want to provide some further feedback or direction to me. And I'll figure out where it goes into the brochure or whatever else would be relative to the other feedback I've got, if that, if that makes sense, Chair Ryan.
It does. And I just need to check. I know Erica was reaching out to you. Patrice, did you have a chance to get your comments in to Erica? I'll ask Patrice that. And then Liz, you wanted to do it during this meeting. So I understand you want to do that. And so we can go ahead and do that. Patrice, did you have a chance to give your comments to?
Yes, I did. Actually, I thought in general it looked really good. I did want some photo changes, which we've already talked about. Other than that, I think it looks pretty good. On the other hand, I know many of you have been on the board for a long time, probably have some good input. And so I'll listen to your good input.
Well, I like green more than I do blue or red, you know, how's that? This says the colorblind guy. Anyway. So, okay, you know, Judy's had hers. We received Judy's, we received Lena's mine. So Liz, you, you have comments that you would like to add, you know, in the brochure. Go ahead, Liz.
Sure. Well, I just want, I want to make sure that in terms of the community, I guess I just want to make sure that the here, let me put, I'm going to put me off of video so I can pull up my own screen. Hold on. Yeah. So I just want to make sure in describing the community and the history, want to make sure the history is is correct in terms of our indigenous populations and that history. I think that, you know, we're trying to communicate just like how exciting it is to live in Coconino County. So I do appreciate the information that was put about the county's growth rate and the economy. I think what I would like to put in there in Coconino County is the, if there's a little bit more about maybe the, the structure of the county in terms of us having elected officials as department heads, I know that's under governance, but perhaps there could be a little bit more about the departments of of the county. I mean, it has like Health and Human Services, but in that whole area where you're talking about elected officials, could we put some other departments there?
We, normally we would put that about under their government because it's really getting into the, the community. We really tend to talk about the, the quality of life and your attributes of, of living and, and, you know, being a resident in that area. We can certainly incorporate there. Probably makes more sense to talk about if you want. I can certainly add under governance and organization, that would probably be the most appropriate section to be relevant to say other, you know, we've identified the other elected officials here. But if you also want us to incorporate the the other appointed officials, we could certainly articulate those. And that would probably make the most sense to put it there if that makes, if that, if you can.
Yeah, because I noticed in the community, you have the 29 school districts in the county and five private schools. And then you have the Coconino County Education Service Agency listed there. And it says that it ensures ensuring that preschool through 12th grade receive an exemplary education and county tax dollars are used effectively. I would change that because I, it's individual school districts and school boards that ensure that and those tax dollars are actually assessed by the school district. We collect those tax dollars for the school districts, but I think that needs to be revised in terms of some of the language there.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah. And there were some other suggestions in that point that came about identifying state, public, private and tribal educational providers. So I'll, 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 I'll address that. I'll flag that for you. Okay.
Okay, yeah. And they start talking about some county services there, but I know it was in the context of community. But then I thought, well, if we're going to talk about county, one county service there that maybe, maybe there should be like a brief paragraph about, you know, the composition of, of the county as an organization then. But I know you have it in governance. So maybe just, you know, figuring that out a little bit.
Right. I'll add something. Okay. And then so change. And then also add.
Yeah. And just to note, Liz, your first point about the description, if Doug had it up, but we pretty much, the, the description that came from the museum that it seems like we edited it out and yet it keeps circling back. We, we've removed just about all of that one, the description.
This piece up here. Yeah, I was, I was told to strike all that.
Yeah.
That whole list.
It's really hard for me to see your screen. Let me see. Yeah, that, that's not accurate. I don't think.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Lena. Yeah.
I did ask that that be changed. And actually I had a wording in there. So what I can do is reword that to say that these are Aboriginal lands of the native community. And I have it, I have written down, I can submit that, resubmit that.
I, I think if you, well, yeah, you can't see the screen right now, but I incorporated the exact language that was provided to me. I didn't know who it came from, obviously. But yeah, I think we've got that with the Aboriginal lands of the tribes, including.
Doug, can you read it? Because she's on phone.
Sure. Okay. So that, we struck, well, let me pull this off. We struck the entire section from nationally historical records.
I can actually see the screen. It's just.
Oh, you can. Okay. So here's.
Yeah.
I added.
My auto just doesn't work. And I see that, but what I'll do is I will resubmit a wording there also because it looks like you struck out everything.
Well, your wording's on the right there, Lena.
It's off to the right. Maybe I move it over that way. Can you see it now?
It's in the middle. Can you see that, Lena?
Yes, but it shouldn't say include. Coconino County is the Aboriginal lands of the tribes.
I, I just took what was given to me. If you want me to say is versus includes, you know, however, I'll take whatever you want.
What I, what I can do is just submit wording and then everybody can wordsmith it if you want. I mean, it's, it's.
Sure. Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I, you, we might have a difference. Yeah.
Can I?
Here's, as I say, what, what might, and I realize because I, I've been incorporating what's been given to me. So I've seen them. I can, you just have to go on a faith that I've, I've taken what you've given me and put it basically as, to the extent possible, word for word. I've had to wordsmith some things, make them fit into the context of the various sections. So my suggestion is we might not want to wordsmith this right now until you get the next draft. Because that will give you the opportunity to say, if you want to strike something and make an adjustment. I just don't want you to get caught, you know, running down rabbit trails until you've seen a clean draft. But take my, take my word that I've tried to incorporate what you've given me as verbatim as possible, to the extent that I could fit it into the tense and the context of the various sections that is provided.
Okay, Patrice.
Yeah. I, I'm sorry. I wasn't done yet. Can I, can I just, can I finish my thought, please?
Yeah.
This is Liz. It's okay. And I'm not going to try to wordsmith here. I can give you wordsmiths after this meeting. But what I want to communicate is more the fill. So for example, I'm just going to give you themes in community. The second, the second page where it talks about community, it's actually page three, but it's community continued. So I'd like to talk a little bit about small businesses. I mean, I know you have some like major employers. And, but I think small businesses are the heart of Coconino County as well. So I'd like to have some themes around small businesses. The, to try to give a fill again for the county, like I'm looking more for like, why would people want to apply? And why would they want to, if they had to move, move here? So I would, on that part, I'd like to see small businesses. And I can stop there just for community before we go on to the next page. And Mr. Chair, if there's other people that have things that, before we move on, I'll, I'll go ahead and stop.
With Liz's comments, does anybody want to follow on that?
I, I, I suggest the more looking and making sure that the, the rural communities are mentioned. That it makes it, it all, this, this, this brochure just looks at Flagstaff. And then beyond that, it doesn't look like it's there. And I looked at the Coconino County, 18,000 square miles is, I think it was like on page five. It should be, I, I think it should really describe the county. And that's where the ruralness. Comes in. Maybe there should be a description of who the county is. And then the, the communities are very diverse too. It just really just looks at one section. And so I'm, I'm wondering if maybe Eric and his team can help with this. Also, they know, they know, they know us, they know our county. And that way we'd be able to get a cleaner copy that comes in. So I, I really looked at the, the wording. There was no, not a single word that, that rule in here. And so that's what I went through and so there were some changes that I had made. But anyway, that'd be great. I think the description, the description of the county be, needs to be more than the Flagstaff area. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we, we move into the, another board member, I wanted to point out that Erica is back on. If we do want to talk about how we're going to incorporate public affairs into this as well. I don't see that she's been elevated as a panelist, but she should be.
Okay, that's a very good idea. And we do want to hear about that while they're bringing them in. Just, you know, a point, Erica could shape them up further, you know, and, you know, at this point. They've received all your comments, Lena, and they're incorporating most of them in there, just about all of them. As well as the other board members that had submitted them. But they did get them last minute. In terms of comments, that's why you're not seeing it because we, the board, did not submit them for the ability to present them during this meeting. So we're trying to adapt what we're doing. To, we didn't get them on time to put them in the brochure, although Doug did try to edit what he had seen. The, we're, we're picking up any comments that hadn't been submitted already. Working through that a little bit. And then we will come back, these, having staff work on the pictures and Doug working on these edits, we'll have a chance to see what they put in this weekend and look at. And needing the board to respond to those edits, we think that we can shape them to what you're doing. A lot of what you already asked for to be put in there, Lena, has been modified and incorporated. It's just hard to show it because we got everything pretty late on this. Okay, so Erica, are you elevated yet? And Liz, I know you're out there and you want to work on the next piece of this. Yeah, let me, let me just make, before I go to you, Judy, and then I'll, I'll go to Liz as transitioning. I know you're out there wanting the comment as you go through Liz, but let's see if Erica's on here. Erica, are you on?
Yes, I am. Chair Ryan.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric, for elevating me. I appreciate it.
Fantastic. And I'm not sure where you are in terms of conversation of where we are. It probably would be good with you explaining what, what you've done thus far. And then we can grab it for where we are mid, mid-process right now. Go ahead, Erica.
Great. Thank you, Chair Ryan. So I had been collecting some, some feedback from some of you. I know some of you spoke to the chair directly and I did provide that to Doug earlier today, not much earlier. So he has not yet been able to fully incorporate all those edits. I see the draft with the strike throughs and, and the comments. So I see that that's in progress. I also know that I've been receiving many emails with additional photos. So I appreciate that. As we needed to really kind of see this first draft, possibly come together to better define what we needed in this brochure. And so this is a part of the process and very excited to make these changes, bring that back and make sure that the tone and texture of this brochure is what is desired. And work with, I will be happy to work with Doug and his team on, on making sure that we can bring back another copy to you this weekend for your final review.
All right. And pause for a second for questions of Erica. Okay, I'm not hearing them just yet. Okay, so then Liz, before we go on, Judy wanted to put in a comment of where we were at this, this moment, I believe. So I'll turn to Supervisor Begay. Judy?
Chair Ryan and other boards supervisors. As I was going through this whole thing that really bothered me, that is very oriented only in a certain area. And just like Supervisor Fowler said, you know, where is all the, the tribal portion of the lands or the schools being covered? It's just like we're talking about just one area. And this person that comes on is not going to only be visible or planning or, you know, just for this, this specific area. We have north and south within the whole county. And I think that has got to be included. Everything's got to be included. And I've been saying that since I came on board that, you know, there, there's, we have to look in those terms, more local, more rural, because those are things that we, that, that we're here for. I mean, I was elected into this position and, and I, it, it just kind of bothers me. But I don't want, and on the other hand is that, on the other hand, it, it just, it, 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 it mentions there's 29 schools or something like that plus five private. And then all of a sudden it's back to just one centralized area. So I think if we're going to do this right, it's got to include everybody in the, in the county, Coconino County. Anybody, anything, everything, maybe the map of the whole county and then just divided by districts. And that would be one area that we can throw in here. So we know where all the county boundaries are and that it's meant for all the people that are residents in the, in that county. So I just wanted to say that, but I, I, I think there's, that, that's the kind of work that we need, we need to do. And so it, it, that, so that everybody's included in this, in this whole document or plans of how we're putting things together. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Judy. And, and yeah, that's, so that's a, a current theme that we don't concentrate only on the Flagstaff area. We definitely want to get our other areas represented as best we can in this brochure. And so, you know, I think, you know, Erica, you're, you hear that and Doug would depend upon us to be able to help out in that way. The other piece though, for everybody on this, as we do it, is just while they're doing that, you know, we only have so much space also. And, and so, you know, we're, we're not going to be able to put every area in there, but showing that diversity, showing rural, showing tribal or elements that are desired along with, I mean, the, the Flagstaff area, which is the county seat as well, you know, it is, you know, an area of, it's an area of importance as well, but it shouldn't be the only area.
Supervisor Ryan?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Lena.
Go ahead, Lena.
The only wording that I, I just, I just added a few words like rural and, and just that the description from the northern Arizona. It didn't, I didn't mean to have it all scratched out. I guess Erica, we need to maybe talk about that some more. You know, if that's the record at museum, I just wanted to add in there. So really I thought the brochure was okay. It's just that the rules wording, I think we added it here and there and that was it. So just want to let you know that. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Lena. Okay, where to go from here? Liz, you want to incorporate some more of your thoughts as you had looked at it? So we haven't been able to capture your thoughts on this.
Sure. And I think Supervisor Horseman might have had something to add in the section that we were at.
Okay.
Because I did hear her. Sure. Yeah. I just don't want to move on.
Okay.
And that may be the most effective way, Chair, to just do the section by section. I've heard on the community section that Supervisor Archuleta wanted to add some, some language on small business in addition to the bigger. I've captured that. I'll work with, with Erica to get some language on that regard. But is there anything more on that and on the community section that has not been raised yet?
I see. Go ahead, Patrice. Okay.
This, I'm afraid this is going to get very long. So I'm, I'm fine. I'm, I'm looking forward to getting the second draft.
Understood. Right. All right. Okay, go ahead, Doug.
All right. So I really, as I said, I, I, we've made changes to values and things. And I have incorporated to Judy's comment about rural and the expansion and move some things around. So I, I really think that hopefully that she'll be pleased with the, what we, what we've got in the next draft that you'll be seeing this weekend as well. So we did talk about governance and organization and I have captured a thought of adding some of the other departments that are not, that are not articulated here. Just so you've got a comprehensive component of that, I think. Supervisor Archuleta had raised that as well. So I do have that. But was there anything else under the governance and organization from those that did not provide comments that we need to know about?
Anybody out there? Liz?
Well, yeah, this, this, yeah, sure. Thank you. This is Liz. I think in terms of governance and organization, I mean, I'm just trying to like, what sets us apart? You know, like I see, and I see, I don't know if it would go here or about the position, but I think it does. I want to communicate just, you know, that the county manager works hand in hand with the board of supervisors. It's a, and I know somewhere in the brochure it talks about a team, like a team effort. But I think it just needs to be said that that, you know, that needs to be said, that the, the manager and the, and the board do work hand in hand. It's not an us them. And so I think that does set us apart. I would just like to communicate like the uniqueness of our organization in that way. I mean, some of this has a bit of a, I mean, I just don't, this is just not any XYZ county. So I'm just trying to figure out ways in terms of using language and words that really distinguishes Coconino County and some of the things that we're very proud of. And that is one of the things that we're proud of.
Yeah. If I, if I can maybe address that, I can certainly see if we can change that approach. So to reckon, let me maybe, and maybe I should have started with this approach as well. The brochure is intended clearly to attract candidates' interest. So it's going to include a lot of information about the community, how you're structured. And then it starts to get, as far as the relationships and the style and the, the type of person you're looking for this position. We typically start to delve into more in terms of those, what I originally referred to as kind of challenged. Now it's been referred to instead of challenges, opportunities as opportunities and priorities. And then certainly as it gets into the type of person and the skills and the desire you want to get, we try to talk about in the ideal candidate. So in other words, many individuals that are looking at this are going to first and foremost get a sense of, all right, what's this place all about as a quality of life? How are you structured, which is the governance and organization? What's the position responsibilities, which is about the position? And then getting into, all right, if I'm considering this position, what am I going to have to get my arms around in the first, you know, six, nine months as I'm there? Which are those, those issues and challenges and opportunities? And then going into more granular level, what type of person and what type of experience are you looking for? Which then gets into the ideal candidate attribute. So I, it's kind of, the, the process is designed that way, which many folks that'll be looking at this position are going to be used to. I mean, whether it's us or someone else doing it, that's the nature of it. I can certainly add some color because I, I certainly, I believe, I've tried to capture the design of the we concept, the team concept with the board and the leadership. I certainly, that was all part of it. And I've, I've tried to articulate that in other sections. But if you want me to kind of add a better flavor, because I recognize you're a unique organization. I understand that. And I want to make sure I'm reflecting of what is your culture. But I just want to kind of preface that the, the concept here is to give you at least initial information about the organization such that it's going to draw a candidate in and then have contacts with me or to follow up to learn more about the things that maybe didn't get in the brochure. Because we can't obviously incorporate everything in the brochure. So it's meant to be a good promotional piece, but not necessarily been inclusive of everything. And I think as I described.
No, I know, Doug. Yeah. And I'm going to interrupt you. I understand that. And that's why I'm trying to say it needs to be promotional. We're trying to captivate a person. I don't, and I, and I, I find this a bit, I find the language a bit bureaucratic. I'm trying to be more captivating. It's kind of like you're, you know, like, why come visit when you're trying to capture tourism? You know, like why, why Coconino County? Why makes, what, what makes it special? What makes it unique? And if I was a candidate, I'd be wanting to know that first because I'm going to be captivated by that. And then I'm going to get granular, learn more about the, the government part of the organization and, and how it's structured and all of that. So I am talking about that. I'm talking about easing off on the bureaucratic part and putting some more colorful language and more vibe that communicates the vibrancy of the organization. Because people, they're worth their salt. They're also going to do a lot of research. And they'll be able to find that really granular information when they do their research.
Understood.
So can I then go down to? Let's see, can I go down to about the position?
Yeah, it just, Doug, do you need any more on that, that section there?
Unless, I'll, I'll take whatever comes. So if I, I'm. Unless I'll I'll take whatever comes. So if I I'm hearing, if I don't hear it, I'm assuming we're we're moving on to the next section. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, and and we know we have comments from others. Uh, but while we're going along, just pause for them. Uh, you guys ready? Move on? Looks like it. I'm not seeing comments. Okay, go ahead, Liz.
Okay. So thank you. So um, I'm looking for some more type of, and again, I'm not going to wordsmith it right now. I'm looking for some just themes. I'm looking for some more action words, some more act- active words about the position. I'm looking for a county supervisor who has a vision, um, who has leadership, um, who uh, establishes the culture and morale of the organization. And is, you know, and uh, uh, maintains that. Um, not just supervising department heads. Um, I think it's more like, um, that's probably known that they supervise department heads, but so maybe expanding that um, like, supervising department has them working uh, to uh, achieve the vision um, or to strategically, um, and innovative implement uh, the programs or I mean, I'm just, I would just a little bit more, of active words.
Sure, we got you. Okay.
And then I really appreciate the area about the um, the, I think we need to weave uh, the ethic of uh, diversity, inclusion, diversity, equity, inclusion and justice throughout um, the, throughout the brochure. I know there's a section specifically on that. Um, but that is uh, you know, part of the fabric of our organization. And so I, I think, you know, everything that we do is done with that spirit. And so I would like to see that woven in a little bit more. Um, that's just, I mean, trying to add flavor to the position, about the position, just trying to add what I see. Um, and then I'm happy to go on to challenges and opportunities, which you said now are is called what?
Opportunities and priorities.
Okay, great. But I'll I'll stop there if anybody else wanted to add something in about the position.
Others? Not seeing them. Go ahead, Liz. And just uh, you know, we have about uh, ten more minutes here.
Yep. Yeah, I just really want to communicate again, vision and leadership. I think Doug, you and I, that's probably all we talked about. Um, or at least that was, one of my major themes. Um, so I don't want to lose that. Um, I don't see that. I didn't see that captured.
Capture it. Um, I can add some more about the leadership under this section. I mean, I was trying to capture the team concept, the approach of not a we versus they and, um, but if you want me to kind of bolster that, I'll take a look at that and try to address some more under that 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 first bullet.
Yeah, leadership and vision.
Okay.
Um, under challenge, uh, under the next one, opportunities and priorities. Um, I don't, you know, I don't know that it's the revision of a county strategic vision. Um, it's establishing it. I I don't think that, uh, to me, yeah, it's it's actually establishing a county strategic vision. Um, I don't see that it's a revision because I don't know that we actually have a county strategic vision. So um, that just needs to be worked on. Um, and it's not, I'm sorry, the first one about governing body relationships and leadership, a team concept, it's really a team. Um, and it's, I see it as being a team just period. Um, probably not in in quotes, but to promote a team or to um, uh, establish a team. It's, yeah, it's just,
Okay.
It is, like, that's an expectation. Um, the organizational renewal initiative, uh, want to get down to D E I J is not a program. Um, it is a culture. So we never want to say D E I J as a program. It's um, in everything that we do and it's front and center of everything that we do.
Okay.
Um, uh, I mean, complex intergovernmental relations. Um, I don't know if that sounds negative or not. I think it's um, important in our governmental relations, maybe your key, intergovernmental relations. I don't necessarily see them as being complex. Um, I think they're important.
I'll come up with a different word. I think we're on the same page. It it's a unique relationship, be given, given the diversity of all your players out there. That's why I use complex, but I can, I can come up with a different word for that.
Yeah. Um, and I think the next county manager will help coordinate. I think the next county manager, like the county manager is key. Um, like we expect that now. So it's not like we don't have that. It's just that, the county, the county manager needs to understand that that's important.
Okay.
Uh, like periods. It sounds like that's something new that the county manager will do and it's and it's not.
Understood.
I mean, it's more than help coordinate too. Um, um, other than that, a few little wordsmith things, which I will get to you. Um, yeah, that's about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Chair, the only um, the only concern I've got, I know you got ten minutes and I know that, you know, this next section is likely to generate some additional comments. And um, so I'll leave it up to you whether, how we want to do this, but I do want to go through the schedule with you. And I'm I'm just fearful that if we don't do that now, we probably need to do that. I'll defer to you if you want to go through that now or if we need to set up another time. But at some point, I'm going to need to have that conversation with you. That can certainly happen uh, post-launch uh, of the position, if that gives you some more time to deal with it. Um, you know, at a later, a later point. But I certainly have some questions that I know I'm going to get. And I need to get clarity from the board on, you know, once, once we launch this position, because I know Candace is going to be asking me some things about that.
Yeah, I I would say uh, just based on our time constraint, um, uh, Liz, uh, would you be okay uh, providing your additional comments for the next sections?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then we, for the sake of uh, the other soups, uh, you know, we we definitely heard you. They're definitely out there. Um, you know, uh, please uh, make sure uh, when they get this back to you over the weekend, uh, that uh, you work together uh, with Erica uh, on uh, helping us finalize it. Okay? Uh, so we we definitely need you over the weekend on this. Um, then uh, go ahead, Doug, on the schedule.
All right. So let me stop on that share and then share a different screen here, if I could, please. Um, let's see. Okay. All right. So everyone see uh, the schedule? Thumbs up to make sure it's showing at your end.
I am, I am not seeing it. Are you guys seeing it? Let's see. Oh, it's up there. Okay. I had it buried.
Gotcha. All right. Okay. So this is, I've been working with with Erica to kind of work through this. And then I gave her a draft schedule and then you started to lock in some meeting dates. So I've incorporated that. And so we're, we're at this point now with the virtual meeting um, with the with the thought of trying to get this this brochure approved. The goal here is to try to have this brochure approved as soon as possible so that we could hopefully launch this position. I I put it on the twenty-ninth, not realizing that we weren't going to have time to have a a revised draft to you for this meeting. But the hope is to try to launch this position uh, on February the first, on Monday. So um, that's kind of where we're at. If that shifts a date, we would have to react accordingly. So what will take place is we'll, we'll launch the position and we'll start accepting and interfacing with candidates. And we typically advertise and and promote the position for about a thirty-day period. Um, so that gets us to early March. And then um, then in about a week or so after that, we've scheduled now, actually, a week after the proposed scheduled date is March eleventh, where I would go through a process with you to do a triage of the candidate pool. Um, and introduce them and and break them down into uh, those that I think are the best fit for your position and why and things of that nature. And out of that process, you'll end up selecting a series of eight to ten to twelve, wherever that natural break is amongst the the five of you. Uh, with regards to, yes, we want to know more about this person. Doesn't mean they're, they're, they're going to be your finalist or anything else, but there's enough there that we agree that, that at least majority of you agree that you're worthy of of keeping that person in the pool. And I always say that that pool can typically be a little larger, um, than what you might think when I say eight to twelve, because you will sometimes lose candidates, because at one point they've applied for the position. They may be applying for other positions and we may lose them to another search that's ahead of us just because of where they are and where we are in this process. And you also have folks that apply. And then when they go to the next step, they said, you know, maybe I'm not as interested in that position as wanting to drop off. So that's why I always say there'll be some flexibility about that number, because you will likely lose one or two candidates from, that you're interested in that originally applied, that may not want to go to the next step or may have accepted another position as this process moves forward. So that's a normally a couple hour meeting. Uh, I don't, we booked for uh, Erica has indicated that starts at eight o'clock, your time. I, you know, we'll figure out what that looks like once we know how many candidates we're dealing with as well. Um, and then from there, the next step, normally after you select those semifinalists, we're going to be asking them to start preparing some background information. Uh, it will normally involve a pretty detailed questionnaire about their background, their history, why they left their previous position, size of budgets, their experiences. And I will also sprinkle in a variety of very detailed questions. That'll be very specific to your county based upon the issues and challenges and things that that I think are going to be important to to, for you to hear these candidates address. Because right now they've submitted a cover letter, as they've applied, they've submitted a cover letter and a and a resume. And we've asked them, we'll also ask them to fill out a brief questionnaire just to kind of learn a little bit more about their background, but it's just high-level screening type of information. I'm going to start at that point unpacking them to a greater extent. And that's part of what they'll work on. They'll also start preparing work on background investigation and things of that nature. So if they're selected by a finalist, then we can pull the trigger and start that background work on them. Things of that nature. So what normally will take place, um, when we do this, we will normally give those candidates about, the better part of two weeks, but this is a little more aggressive in that schedule. By the time they're selected as semifinalist, um, as, and that would happen on this meeting at the eleventh. Uh, I'll be notifying them either later that afternoon or no later than the next morning on the twelfth as to where they are in the process. And if they're semifinalists confirming their continued interest in the position, having them start on their their questionnaire material and the other forms that we need to keep them as we go deeper into the search. And then there was a desire from this board to not use pre-recorded interviews, which was fine. And so we have decided, and my understanding is, is that the board as a whole would like to hold what I'll call virtual screening interviews. Um, that would be, has been scheduled temp- attentively uh, on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Right now, it just kind of held two days open, uh, that Erica has put on our schedule and on your calendars. Um, so what we, what I do want to get a feel from you is under, we would normally provide to you a copy of, the candidates that are selected as semifinalists, their cover letters, their resumes, and then the responses to this more detailed questionnaire. Um, and then we would be scheduling those interviews um, with those folks on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And that would be a a virtual interview process. Now, as I say, I don't know how many you're going to select. It may be eight, it may be ten, it may be twelve. We don't know what that would be. But what I'm, what I want to get a feel from you is a couple things. Number one, are those video, are those virtual interviews going to be done in public or in a closed session? Um, and then number two, what I would recommend is that we really constrain that, because if you've got eight or twelve candidates, um, you're not going to want to spend a detailed amount of time uh, with each one of them, because they're not finalists yet. You'll certainly have that time later in the process. But you're going to probably want to have those be relatively thirty minutes to forty-five minutes at most with a preset set of questions. So that everybody can stay on schedule. And what you're looking for in that is between the background material we're giving you, on their their cover letters, resumes and questionnaire responses, coupled with how they respond to this virtual interview process. A week after that is when we'd be selecting your finalists. And then those folks will go through something deeper. So let me just stop there about making sure you understand on what we've been asked to do on the virtual interviews. Uh, and make sure that they're, and I I need to have clarity whether those will be done in public or in closed session. Because the confidentiality of the candidates are going to be something that I'm going to need to know about pretty quickly about at what point their names potentially could be released as a, as a candidate. And normally that doesn't happen until you've identified them as a finalist and they've accepted the, an invitation to come and participate in onsite interview in some fashion. So let me stop there and and uh, get some feedback from you on that.
Uh, questions or comments from the board on this? Actually, um, you know, while I'm pausing there, uh, Erica, um, at this point, are you out there, Erica?
Yes, I am.
Okay. At this point, actually, um, we're going to need to get on to our next meeting. But a lot of the scheduling piece, uh, you know, we have time uh, to go ahead and talk a little bit more uh, about it. It's, it's a good to see it uh, with where you're you're pausing, Doug, and and taking a look at it. Um, you know, I think we can uh, uh, bring this conversation back and uh, fine tune it. We do have time associated with that.
That's fine, Chair. I I'm I'm more glad to share this with Erica so that we can, these are the dates we've got locked down. But as I say, as we launch this position, uh, I am going to need some direction and clarity, because I'm going to get calls and questions from.
Yes.
So I don't need it now, but I will need it relatively soon.
Un- understood, associated with it. And just for the note, for the sake of the board, uh, you know, and everything, we're, uh, we lost time for this presentation because uh, we had to resolve our issue associated with the uh, uh, the other position uh, that we dealt with earlier today. Uh, so we're a little bit uh, tighter on what we have than we would have been uh, with that. Even so, we have a city council, joint city uh, county meeting, uh, starting at four o'clock. So I think what we need to do is go ahead and and close off this piece. Any additional questions you may have, um, please uh, talk to Erica about it and be looking at suggested changes um, uh, over the weekend so that we can get a rap on the brochure. All right. With that, I'll pause for the board. Uh, any last second things from the board? I'm not seeing anybody bubble up. Uh, this will give us uh, about, what, about a ten-minute break? Uh, and then we have the joint city-county piece. Liz, you're you're on uh, a visual. Did you want to comment on this?
Yeah, just, um, so just so I understand correctly, the timeline is that Erica will get us back the revisions. And then we have the weekend. And is that then our final revisions due Sunday night or is that Monday? Just want to be clear.
Erica?
Or when is the due date for those?
Uh, if we, I think it will depend a little bit on when I can get uh, the brochure out to you.
Well, just let us know in that then, in that email, you let us know. Okay.
Absolutely. So that you can have the time that you need to give it the thorough review that you would like.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Lena, it looks like you wanted to comment. Go ahead, Lena. I'm seeing you, but I'm not hearing you, Lena. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Uh, thank you, Doug. I'm sorry, we got cut short uh, on this one. Uh, we hear you on uh, a couple of those pieces. Uh, and we have time to go ahead. Oh, we got Lena now. Go ahead, Lena. Okay, not getting Lena. Okay, uh, we've got ten minutes. I think it's real important that you get a chance to take a break. But we have a joint city-county meeting uh, coming up in ten minutes. So uh, I'll go ahead and adjourn this work session. And look forward to seeing everybody at the next meeting. Thank you.
Erica, if you're still there, can you give me a call?
Certainly.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks much. We'll see everyone. Bye-bye.